Good evening, tonight, Monday, May 24th, 2021. This is our 6:30 virtual session of the Select Board and Licensing Commissioners for North Andover. It's a live broadcast that can be heard on www.northandovercam.org. And let me read the Governor's Order. Start with pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the North Andover Town website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So with that, I'd just like to ask if we do the Pledge of Allegiance if we could?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd just ask my fellow board members if we could just take one item out of order, and that would be the, under new business, the confirmation appointment of Dawn Warren as Town Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I'm very excited to welcome Dawn Warren home from Andover, where she currently serves as the Assistant Town Clerk and has been there since September 2016. Prior to that, she worked at Amesbury City Hall in the City Clerk's office from 2013 to 2016. Dawn is a North Andover resident, graduated from North Andover High School. I won't share the EIA, don't worry, I'll wish that to anybody. She is a certified municipal clerk, which is very exciting and not easy. So we're very excited to have her. She's starting in June, she'll be here just in time for town meeting, thank God, and we're just, we couldn't be more thrilled to welcome her to the team.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Well, thank you.
And I'll second.
Absolutely. Any other discussion other than we're all excited to have you aboard, put you to work, right?
Congratulations and welcome back to North Andover.
Yes, yes.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to starting work on Tuesday.
Great, great. All right, so I'll just take a look. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, unanimous, welcome aboard. Have a good commute. All right, so now back to our regular schedule, and top of this is the Fire Selection Process. So we have our interviews tonight with our two final candidates.
Do you want me to just give a little background, Mr. Chair?
Would you please?
Okay, so as you know, we have been going through a very comprehensive Fire Chief interview process. I feel like we've probably talked to their preschool teachers and on, but it's been a really great process. We started with four candidates who went through the Assessment Center. Two of them were recommended to be brought forward into the next round by the agency that we were using, MRI. Dee and I, as well as Chief McCarthy, were able to observe the full day Assessment Center. They then were asked to submit their references, a resume, and three essay questions to me and Dee, and then Dee and I put them through a two-hour interview in this room, and now they're here with you. So we have two finalists. One is Deputy Graham Ray, and the other is John Weir, who's a Lieutenant, Graham Rowe. I don't know where the way came from, but John, it's been a long day, John Weir, who's a Lieutenant. The order in which we're going to take them is the Deputy Chief first. Okay, so are you ready for Graham?
Absolutely.
All right, then I will grab him.
He got a great job. He's working in Denver, and he is an environmental scientist, and he does all kinds of cleaning. He's a management position, so it's very exciting for him.
Hey, Graham. How you doing? How you doing? Okay, deep breath, all right?
Yeah. I've done this once before, that's why I have my water this time.
He runs into burning buildings, he's not afraid.
Good. Well, so Deputy Chief, if you would, for the folks in the community who are watching, can you introduce yourself and tell us why you're an ideal candidate for our Fire Chief position?
Sure. My name is Graham Rowe. I've been Deputy Fire Chief for about the last five years, been on the department about 17 years now. I've been preparing for this for most of my career. When I first started off, I was a firefighter, and I was quite content with being a firefighter. One of the things that I always learned was if you want to make change, you kind of have to move up the rank, and that was one of the biggest things. You know, sitting around the table, listening to problems or issues that we might have had, I wanted to be able to fix some of those. Being a firefighter, you can only go so far. So that's why I ended up, I ended up moving up to the rank of Lieutenant. I moved up very quickly to the rank of Lieutenant. I believe I was a Lieutenant within eight years, being on the job, which is fairly quickly. Did that for about four years, and then I became Deputy Chief for the last five. With this position, I've been a town resident my entire life, was born and raised here. I currently reside here. This is one of the places that, you know, I want to grow up, I want my family to be raised in this town, this community. So I want to move up and make sure it's safe, I want to make sure that everything is okay in the town, I want to be able to provide a service to the town. So with that being said, I've been preparing this my entire life. I've, I know you have my resume, you've seen the extensive things that I've done, not just here, but outside. I'm the Deputy Incident Commander for the BAA's Boston Marathon. I oversee about 260 medical volunteers in the secure area of the finish line. Been doing that about five years now. Moved out from an Operations Section Chief to now being Deputy Incident Commander and occasionally switch off with the IC. So I've just been preparing for my entire career for this position. I'm hoping to move up and be able to move this town and move the Fire Department into the future. I want to make sure that we're up with the current trends, I want to make sure that we're up providing the best service, whether it be fire prevention, public education, EMS. So that's where I'm headed. And I'm hoping, I told you the last time I was up here, whether it was going for Deputy Chief or Fire Chief, you'll see me again, I'll be back. It's not going to slow me down because this is where I'm headed and where I want to be.
So as a current leader in the North Andover Fire Department, can you describe one initiative that you brought forward and how it improved our fire service?
Yes. One of the easiest things I can bring forward is the open burning permits. We used to pay for a company that managed our open burning permits. It was absolute chaos. We would get calls for smoke in the area, and, you know, we'd call Dispatch, is there any open burning permits? Dispatch would have to go through a computer and look through all these addresses to see if anybody actually was burning that day, try to find a location so they could figure out exactly where it was. One of the things that we did is we ended up using people forms, which the town introduced. So I got together with Chris McClure, and I kind of told him what I was looking for, and he guided me right down the direction. We used the GIS mapping and the people forms to be able to update residents and say, yes, burning is allowed today, you can go online and you can burn. And when you activate a burning permit, actually on the map that we have now in the trucks, on the mobile data terminals or the computers inside the trucks, it'll show that address with a little flame on it. So now everybody knows if we're going out to a smoke in the area call, we can kind of look at that map really quickly and find out if there's any open burning permits. That was a big, big help to the department, because for a while we were getting a lot of those calls and having to search the areas and try to find that, which was, it was draining the services because we had to keep a truck out of service for a very long time. Depending if we could find it fast enough, there could have been a brush fire that spread a lot faster, so it, it was just a small initiative, but it made a big impact for us to be able to get out there and make sure that there was nothing wrong.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So what do you see as a big challenge for the town of North Andover in the next three years? And how would you help the Fire Department prepare for that challenge? And what resources would you like to see from the town, or would you need to meet those challenges?
Well, over the next three years, the fire service changes very quickly with trends that are out there. We usually get a lot of the fire service trends that come from Western United States and work their way towards us. We end up, with the town and the amount that it's growing with the Amazon project, the Avalon project, Royal Crest possibly coming up in the next few years, we have a lot of new buildings and new construction coming in, which is a strain on the Fire Department because we're limited on our fire prevention. We're down to one gentleman. The town has been nice enough to allow us to have a second one come in shortly, once Amazon starts, you know, ramping up a little bit, which is going to be very beneficial to us. But with the, with these trends, the things that we need to do is Chief McCarthy has had, he's been trying to restructure the department, get a little bit more command in there, get a little bit more span of control. And one of the great things about that is we're moving that direction. He's had some pretty big hurdles that he's had to get over. We had the Columbia gas, we had COVID, so it kind of slowed down, but it's never stopped him. And that's one of the things that I want to continue to move forward, because in doing that, we're going to be able to compartmentalize and be able to focus on certain things so we can handle that situation a little bit better and keep up with the trends. One of the biggest things that I want to do is I want to start data collecting, because as everybody knows, data shows what you need and how to move forward. If we don't have the right data to prove that we need things, grants are going to be a lot harder to get, and grants are a huge funding source there, especially for fire departments, but you need a lot of information, you need to be able to justify everything. With the, the new computer systems that we've started to bring out, the way that we're tracking, that's what we're going to have to be able to use and utilize to be able to get grants to, not to tap the town's amount of money and be able to kind of find other resources so we're not taking from other departments that also need it. But we need to grow the department. That's one of the biggest things. With all this industry or residences that are growing out, we're going to hit to a certain point that our department isn't going to be big enough to be able to handle all the emergencies. We currently, looking at each individual project, that project's not going to impact the department, that project's not going to impact the department, that one isn't. But when they're all combined, it might increase our calls, each one's about 300 calls, now we're up to an extra thousand per year, when we're running about 4,000 calls a year as it is. So it's going to start to tap our resources. What I need from the town is some assistance, yes, it's, we're going to have to restructure the department, we're going to start to work our way that way, but with that data, we may be able to ease the burden on the town's finances. But with their support and they, having them see the vision of where we want to go and what we need to do to get to be able to provide that service with all the industry coming in or all the residences coming in, that's what I would need. I would need their support as long as I can justify why and what I need. Hopefully that answered it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi Graham, how are you?
Not too bad, yourself?
Thank you for applying for the position.
Thank you for having me.
So this one, of course, this was appropriate to me. Much of the community is still recovering from the Columbia gas crisis. Can you describe to me your experience from that day, and we know you were pretty involved because the chief was out of town, and what you learned from it? And finally, if you could add, and what would you do differently?
I learned a lot that day. It was actually kind of, for lack of better words, baptism by fire. It was my first major event being in command, and I didn't have the resource of Chief McCarthy to be able to, you know, tap his ideas and see where we were going, because we work very well talking problems out if we have them. That day, what would I have done different? I would have done a lot different. I was nervous for the guys out fighting the fires because we ran out of air, like the SCBA's. We have 60 SCBA bottles. We called everybody back. I remember reaching out to the Mass Fire Academy, Department of Fire Services, looking for more bottles. Fortunately, because everybody was busy going to other communities, we had a tough time getting that. Radio communications were a little tough, trying to get a hold of people, making sure, I remember one of our crews was making, or they went to make a rescue from a woman on the second floor, and I lost radio contact with them. And being at the command post trying to get a hold of them, it is nerve-wracking, wondering what's happening, what's going on. I think I performed very well under the stress, you know, there's always learning experiences with the fire service. If I say that I know everything, that's my time to retire, because you'll never know everything in this fire service, so I can always learn something from it. I can learn how to, like that day, we delegated very well, but be able to set up Incident Command just a little bit better. We may have missed a couple positions, be able to set that up a little bit better, work on charging our batteries because our portable radios, we had had them on for 12 hours, so the batteries were starting to die, so we're losing contract, or contact with people that way. So there was a lot of things that I could learn, I should have pulled in chargers. One of the great things that we've learned though, from that, and we're actually adapted, is chargers in the vehicles. The great thing about the chargers in the vehicles, before, they used to only charge when they were plugged in, so your portable radio, you could put it in there and it would charge when it was plugged in back at the station, but not out in the field. So now we've learned that that's what we need to do, run it off of the battery, so we can actually charge these radios while we're out in the field. So we did learn things and we did change, and that was one of the small little things that I learned that day, but it's making a big, a big change in the department. That day, it was, a lot of people are recovering from it still. My neighborhood was affected. I lived down by the Thompson School, so that area was pretty, pretty affected, a lot of the roads. My street, originally, they shut it down, but I believe my street was the only one with a high-pressure gas main on it, where everybody, every other street around me had low pressure, so mine was safe, which was good. I was, I lucked out with that. Being out there for the first 48 hours, awaiting the arrival of the Fire Chief was a little tough, it was a little tiring. I wanted to make sure that I was up for the guys and, you know, right beside with them. They're the ones that did the work. I said this a long time ago when they received the award for the Merrimack Valley gas explosions, I got up and I, I said that they were the ones that did the work. I orchestrated it and got as many resources as I possibly could, but the guys are the ones that had the boots on the ground. The guys and girls had the boots on the ground. They were the ones that fought the fires, they were the ones that got dirty, they were the ones that risked their lives. So I can't really take all the credit, I have to actually give it back to the members of the department.
Thank you for that. I, I say this, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, your guys and gals were running into gas-filled homes not knowing what was going to happen, and they were so courageous, along with the Police Department. You were putting out fires, they were pulling people out of homes, and, and I would say that the department was trained very well, considering all that was being, they were being thrown at. And I witnessed it firsthand.
Yes.
So, but, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, as you know, you'll have some pretty big shoes to fill.
Oh, yes.
As Chief McCarthy retires. So how will you build on Chief McCarthy's momentum to continue strong relationships with the firefighters and the other town departments and to progress the department? Continue to, I should say, to continue to progress the department?
The other town departments, I work very well with. Being in this position, I've had to work with each individual department building. Ever since Columbia gas, we've been heavily involved. When I first got promoted, we had a Fire Prevention Officer that was newly promoted, so we had to, both of us were learning our jobs pretty much simultaneously, and I was also trying to learn his, because being a chief and a deputy chief, you have to know a lot about fire prevention, and that's a specialty. So I spent a lot of time with him, and we had a building inspector that was very heavily involved. So learning from him and getting involved in Paul Hutchins, who's now the Building Commissioner, being heavily involved with him. Working with the DPW, the DPW has been great. We work with them on a lot of different things, whether hydrants or needing resources from them, whether they do something as simple as dropping off loom for the firefighters to spread, or they're giving us training props. So working with them and being out on big incidents, whether it was like TBI when we ran into the hydrant issue, working with the town to be able to, that department, the Water Department, and the DPW to be able to fix that or remedy that situation. The School Department, I have in the past worked with firefighter Matt Davis, who has been doing the public safety education, so working with him, I've worked very well with the School Department. So each department I've interacted with, I've never had any issues with, we all have jobs to do, sometimes we're not all going to see eye to eye, but we, we all have a common goal, and building on those, like with the Police Department, we've done active shooter drills at the schools during vacations, we've worked very well, very closely together, and we've learned each, something from each other. Working with them is pretty, pretty easy. Everybody in the town is pretty easygoing. Working with the firefighters, one of the biggest things is change. We're going to have to kind of implement some change. We have some, some goals that Chief McCarthy has put out that a lot of the firefighters are on board with and want to progress that way. There are different ways of accomplishing things, so of course, we're, we're going to, we have to work together, we have to have that common goal. We have to make sure that we all feel where we're going is the right place and be able to plan it out, explain why we're doing that, and then implement the program to get it going and constantly evaluate it to make sure that firefighters are happy, the union is happy, the town is happy, the residents are happy, and I'm happy. So we have to make sure that we're going to have to do that. So there's going to be a lot of open communication, especially being new in the position. I want to find out what, what their goals are. I know the chief has a lot of goals and wants to move forward, as do I, but I also want to know what the firefighters want, what they need, where they want to go, where they see it. My vision for five years is going to be a great overview, but where do firefighters see them going? Like, what are their issues? If I can't satisfy their issues, then my plans, Chief McCarthy's plans and theirs, aren't going to go anywhere. So there's going to be a lot of open communication, trying to figure out exactly where we want to go, so we all join in on the mission to get there.
That was a multi-product question, and you got every piece of it.
Wow, that's good. I'll take it.
That was weird, like, did you get this part?
I'll take it.
What type of leadership style have you developed, and what tools do you use to motivate your team?
There's a lot of different styles, you can't pick just one, especially in the fire service, because it's, it's ever-revolving. You have to make sure that you kind of adjust to the situation. I am the type of person that, I do have certain little pet peeves that I want to make sure are done and done correctly, so, you know, be a little bit more autocratic and just listen, this is the way it has to be, this is the way it's going to be. Especially on a fire ground. On a fire ground, you have to make sure that it's kind of, lack of better words, it's like a dictatorship. I have a mission for you, you need to get it done, here's your assignment, here's your task, you need to get it done. And the crews understand that, and that's just the business that we're in, they have to do it that way. Being back at the station, I want to make sure that I understand, communication, like I mentioned earlier, is very, very key. You have to make sure that you understand the message, and I want to be able to, I just don't want to go in and tell them, listen, this is what you have to do, this is where we're going to go in the next five years, because everybody perceives messages completely different. Like, we're all sitting here with masks, and reading facial expressions is huge. Hopefully this will end at some point, and we'll be able to read facial expressions again, because that's a major part of my communication and my leadership style. I want to know how people are, I want to make sure that they understand why I'm going in a certain direction. There are certain times that you have to make unpopular decisions, you're going to have to choose a path that the majority of people don't want to go, but there's a lot of stakeholders involved. There's the residents, there's the town, and there's the firefighters. So you have to make sure that the leadership style is going to cater to all of them, but get it all done correctly and make sure that we're on the right path. There are times, like I said, that, you know, unfortunately, this is the way we're going to have to go, but I want to be able to explain it and get buy-in from them. And with 53 members on the department, it's going to be a little tough, because that's 53 different personalities, 53 different ideas, not including myself. So being able to communicate it and get buy-in, that's the way. I'd rather have an open conversation to make sure that we all know where the path is and where we're supposed to be going.
Would you like to make any closing remarks?
Well, I really appreciate the, the time that you've had with me. I really look forward to this position if I'm awarded it. The great thing that I feel positive about is I have about 15 years left on the department, which is, in my eyes, a great way of being able to forecast out into the future and grow with the town. This town is growing a lot. I've grown a lot in the last 17 years on this job, and I would love to continue that for the next 15 years. Not that I wouldn't as Deputy Chief, but I feel that I'd be able to accomplish a lot more in the Chief's position. But I really want to say thank you for the time that you, you've spent with me, and if you ever have any questions, whether I'm Chief or Deputy Chief, don't ever hesitate to reach out, and I'll help you out in any way I can.
Deputy Chief, we very much appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to let Graham out and go collect John, who I pitted in a conference room.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Good night.
I let people in, am I right?
Yeah, I just, I admit everybody. Anybody that wants to come in, I just admit them.
All right, this is John Weir.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Lieutenant Weir, for those folks watching in the community, can you introduce yourself and tell us why you are the ideal candidate for our North Andover Fire Chief?
Sure. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board allowing me to address you today. I'm John Weir. I live with 39 Brightwood Ave in North Andover. Been there for 27 years. I've been a member of the Fire Department for 22 years, 23 this August. I was originally hired when the town passed the override for the second ambulance, and I've always been very grateful for that ambulance, they got me a job. My wife and I have been there, we've been raised our four children there, all gone through the school system, and obviously been, been a big part of the town. I got, like I said, I got on the Fire Department. I was a little different to a lot of people, I got on at 32 years old. I had already had three children, already been out self-employed, had a, my own business that was doing quite well, and wanted to get on the Fire Department, had the opportunity, and my wife and I made the decision, we'd make it work, and it turned out to be a great decision. So it's allowed us to be part of the community. As far as what you asked, sorry, you asked what I've done to prepare for it? I've been, I got on the Fire Department and I started taking classes right away, enrolled in North Shore Community College, started taking classes on my, towards my Fire Science and Technology degree. Taken up every opportunity I could throughout my career to take classes, multiple certifications, I'm on the Regional Tech Rescue Team. I, I've taken classes my entire career to help me, help mitigate emergencies in North Andover and be able to bring those skills back and give them to people, the people I work with. Lately, I've been taking, I do have an undergraduate degree in biology, I have a master's degree in curriculum instruction, which has proved to be very beneficial as a company officer. I've been involved in a lot of training, obviously, and, you know, it's allowed me, I feel to be effective in that position. And I look forward to the opportunity, if this comes through, to continue, either way, I'm going to continue working with the town and the rest of my career. Has that answered your question, sir? Thank you.
As a current leader in the North Andover Fire Department, can you describe one initiative that you brought forward and how it improved our fire service?
One initiative in particular that I brought? Where, like I said, we had over 95% of our members, while everybody else was obviously concerned and, and leaving and evacuating and worrying about the homes, our members showed up. I mean, and not that it's surprising, but I mean, that's, that's a lot of people, we would be people showing up, guys were on their way, because they were out shopping, whatever, on the way to the station, and they were still in flip-flops and shorts, and they'd come across a lone truck trying to get a hose in it. A couple instances, they were moving hoses in flip-flops before they could run back to the station and get their gear. Now, as you know, we had one member who was coming back from the fire academy, and a lot, we talked about training. This member was only halfway through the fire academy, but he had enough confidence that he actually ran the pump for the mutual aid company that pumped at our fire. So we, obviously, there's things to learn, but that was one of those things, events that's almost impossible. I mean, it's, obviously, there's a lot you can learn from, but you hope, first of all, nothing on that scale happens again. And pre-planning went out the window completely. Everything, all our usual plans, all the responses, all the backups we had, were gone. We relied on each other, we obviously, the communication center did an absolutely phenomenal job that day. I mean, I don't know if you haven't listened to the tape, but go back and listen to it, it's absolutely.
That dispatcher was phenomenal.
Yeah, they, they, there was three of them, they did a great job, like I said, and we followed Deputy Will, who was just in, he did a well, great job as the incident commander for the whole thing. Every crew, I mean, unfortunately, we threw all the safety protocols, we have, it's going out the window. We have rules, two in, two out, two people going in a building, two were outside. We had two guys going in to one house with a fire extinguisher, because that's all they had in the ladder truck, so they could run in and see if they could, you know, knock a, knock a situation down quickly, make sure everybody was out of a house, so. But we did learn, you know, our callback system works, we learned how to, goes back, excuse me, goes back to the training I talked about, everybody clicked in and did what they had to do, and we were very, very flexible and plastic, but, you know, as, as far as roles and assignments, and one thing I was involved in afterwards, the second day of that, was they took over the North Andover Mall and set it up, and I was able to work with Lieutenant Foles from the police department, a representative from the state police, and a representative of Columbia Gas, and we were charged with sending out the groups of, they took a fire truck, a police car, a Columbia Gas vehicle, and had to go to every resident in the affected area, and we had to keep track of it. And you go to all these tabletop drills, incident commander, you do this kind of stuff, and, you know, how big they are. We're, I guess we got a little pat on the back, and again, this isn't me, this was a whole group effort, because the deputy from Lawrence came down, because they, Lawrence was doing there, doing the same thing up at the showcase cinema, and they came down, and they said, what is your group doing? What kind of defensive going? Excuse me? He said, we were told to come down here and watch what you guys are doing, because you're almost done, and it's, things aren't going as well over here. So, so they ended up moving things down and taking over what we were doing and following. So, like I said, it was good that way to see some of the actual skills that, you know, these big disaster drills that they do tabletop, and to actually see it play out, so. I'm not sure if I've gone totally aside with Louis Murray.
I'm going to correct you on one thing, and you said at the beginning, you know, it was so crazy that the training went out the window. I would argue with you on that. The training came through, people did what they needed to do, even when everything was, you know, it was turmoil, and our guys were running in, and ladies were running into fire-filled, gas-filled homes and putting fires out. So I think they were trained pretty well, John.
If I said training, I, I meant to say.
I'm teasing you.
The protocols, I'm sorry, if it came out that way, I apologize.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just saying, you were, you were being modest, and I wanted to take this opportunity to correct you that they, they did great.
I was, I was only one of 54 people working that day, so.
Well, again, your modesty, but they did great, so, thank you. I'm just, that was, I wasn't coming at you, I was, I was saying, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
I was there too, you know.
I meant all the training protocols, you know, like, this is what we do in this situation.
Yeah, I understand.
Training actually is exactly what saved us all, then, you know, because we did exactly what we had trained to do, so.
Hey, Lieutenant, the incumbent chief is going to have some pretty big shoes to fill as, as Chief McCarthy retires. How will you build on Chief McCarthy's momentum to continue strong relationships with the firefighters, other town departments, and what are your plans to progress the department forward and, and keep it going forward in the, in the future?
Well, first of all, like you said, Chief McCarthy's done an excellent job. He has really redeveloped the community of firefighters again. Excuse me, this mask I keep. And, and he's done a lot to improve our training, he's given us a lot of skills, and he's, you know, he's a very charismatic guy, and obviously, he cares about the town, almost to a fault, more than a few times I've said to him, I'm like, go home, will you? I think a lot of, like, when I got on, you know, you've been around for a while, when you start saying, back when I got on, but, but there used to be, you know, we used to do a lot of picnics, we used to do stuff like that, as a, and then, you know, over time, some of those traditions kind of wane off, and then, of course, COVID hasn't made it any easier, because, I mean, we actually, at one point, where Chief McCarthy divorced the two stations. We weren't allowed to, and to make, overtime was at each station, and I think it was a wise tactical decision, because if one station got infected, we didn't lose the whole fire department, like it happened in some other places in the country. Bringing that back together, and, you know, and getting the whole, I mean, it's not just the fire department, it's the whole town, it's, it's everybody learning, you know, if we can start getting back together again and doing things. But continuing, building on that community is, is really important to the fire service, being able, I mean, we, we're a little different than most jobs, because I spend sometimes more hours a day with the people I work with than I do my wife. There are times when my wife might like that better. I'm joking, 30 years married, she'll be killing me for saying this, but, but continuing that, continuing the positive attitude, and one thing about Chief McCarthy is always led by example. He doesn't tell you to do, has never told you to do things that he hasn't done. He's always been an excellent model as far as his attendance, as far as his drive for training, his initiative, just to try to improve the department's ability to respond to needs of the town, and I think obviously, I want to try to emulate that and, and continue in that. I'm sorry, what was the last part of that?
So it was, it was a three-parter. It was, you know, to continue strong relationships with the firefighters.
Yep.
Town departments, and to move forward. I think you hit a few of them.
Okay, and working with other departments, you said, obviously, there's so much going on, building in the town, working with the building department, the planning department, the highway department, making sure all the, you know, as all these, all these big plans come together, make sure that we, all the needs of the town are met, make sure, you know, make sure we're, we're prepared to respond, make sure we all work together. We've been very fortunate in this town, because like the police, the fire, the DPW, we all, we all work well together, and that's not the case in all communities. It, it, so we are very fortunate that way, but continuing that, obviously, and, you know, like I said, working with building, planning is going to be important. Obviously, in another way, veteran services, I mean, we have a lot of veterans coming back, you know, from service and stuff, and making sure we keep supporting them, and there's a lot coming out, like I said, there's just, we have a lot of great support, we work well with the, the senior center, trying to make sure that the elderly residents, you know, I always stress with my EMTs, you know, when you go into that house and peek in the fridge if the elderly person's living there, make sure that they have, you know, food and all that kind of stuff. If you see something that's not, that's questionable, let us know, because we've done it many times, senior outreach coordinator, you know, just try to get somebody else meals and wheels, things like that, so, just teaching people to make sure we keep that, those doors all open.
And the third part was the firefighters, relationships with the firefighters.
The relationship with the firefighters, I think I have a leg up on that a little, not a leg up on Chief McCarthy, but in general, as, for myself, because I have a good relationship, I believe. Obviously, there'll be time when that, if I become chief, that might be strained at times, but I think setting an example, letting everyone know what you expect of them and what they can expect from you, treating everybody fairly is going to help, and is going to help foster a strong community. I think if everyone knows, knows the rules, knows how they're going to be evenly applied, I think, I think that's beneficial, you know? Like I said, we're a second family, so it's, it's important to make sure we keep those relationships going, and.
Thank you, sir.
Did I miss anything there? Sorry.
You got them all.
All right. If you haven't noticed, I ramble at times, don't feel free, rein me back in a little bit.
Lieutenant Weir, just, what type of management style have you developed? And what tools are you use, do you use to motivate your team?
I think leadership style is try to delegate some, try to allow people that work under you to develop their skills. If you make all the decisions for everybody, then when it comes time, like, like the gas emergencies, and people have to make decisions on their own and you're not there, they don't have the skills. Being able to allow people to take some ownership, if you're doing a training or something, allow somebody, take one of the senior members and allow them to run a section of the evolution, the drill that we're doing, because it allows them to show their skills and become a little more confident in their skills. And it also helps, too, if younger members are hearing from, not hearing from me all the time, you're looking at somebody else who, who's been doing the job for a long time. I think delegation is very important, especially, you know, as you move up and you have more responsibilities and more things going on, if you try to do too much, everything suffers. You have to be able to let, delegate things out to people that can handle tasks so that you can focus on, on different, different things at the same time. Does that make sense? And was there a second part to that, sir?
I would just say, you know, would you like to make any closing statements beyond that?
Well, first of all, I apologize if you couldn't hear me, if I mumbled or I rambled on. I, I thank you for the opportunity to be in here. Be honest with you, if you had told me three years ago I was going to be sitting here, if you told me probably a year ago that I'd be sitting here, talking about Fire Chief, I'd be, you know, my, my youngest daughter was coming home from college, and my other daughter who lives with us still, told her that I was going for this, she goes, there's no way Dad's going for that. There's no way. She goes, you can't get off a truck and do that, but I think there's a unique opportunity here. There's going to be so much change in the fire, fire department, like I said, turnover, so much growth in the town, so much turnover in the department. I feel it's an opportunity to try to continue the great service we've been providing to the citizens of North Andover, help develop some new programs, and possibly some new efficient ways to do some things. I believe the abilities I have from my training, from the schooling I've done, has given me a, a good skill set. I know there's plenty of areas where I'm lacking, but I also know that we have some tremendous resources within the department and outside the department, within the town, and I'm smart enough to ask for help if I need it. And I want to thank you, like I said, for the opportunity to sit before you, and I appreciate your consideration for this position.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
All right. Thank you, good evening.
Hi, John, thank you. [inaudible]
Melissa, from what you've, from Adam, tell me what you've pointed out here, that we can take this opportunity.
He doesn't tell you to do, has never told you to do things that he hasn't done. He's always been an excellent model as far as his attendance, as far as his drive for training, his initiative, just to try to improve the department's ability to respond to needs of the town. And I think obviously I want to try to emulate that and, and continue in that. I'm sorry, what was the last part of that?
So it was, it was a three-parter. It was, you know, to continue strong relationships with the firefighters.
Yep.
Town departments and to move forward. I think you hit a few of them.
Okay, and working with other departments, you said. Obviously, there's so much going on building in the town, working with the building department, the planning department, the highway department, making sure all the, you know, as all these, all these big plans come together, make sure that we, all the needs of the town are met, make sure, you know, make sure we're prepared to respond, make sure we all work together. We've been very fortunate in this town because like the police, the fire, the DPW, we all, we all work well together, and that's not the case in all communities. It, it, so we are very fortunate that way. But continuing that, obviously, and, you know, like I said, working with building, planning is gonna be important. Obviously, another way, veteran services, I mean, we have a lot of veterans coming back, you know, from service and stuff, and making sure we keep supporting them. And there's a lot coming out, like I said, there's just, we have a lot of great support. We work well with the senior center, trying to make sure that the elderly residents, you know, I always stress with my EMTs, you know, when you go into that house and peek in the fridge if the elderly person's living there, make sure that they have, you know, food and all that kind of stuff. If you see something that's not, that's questionable, let us know because we've done it many times, senior outreach coordinator, you know, just try to get somebody else meals and wheels, things like that. So just teaching people to make sure we keep that, those doors all open.
And the third part was the firefighters, relationships with the firefighters.
The relationship with the firefighters, I think I have a leg up on that a little, not a leg up on Chief McCarthy, but in general, as for myself, because I have a good relationship, I believe. Obviously, there'll be time when that, if I become chief, that might be strained at times, but I think setting an example, letting everyone know what you expect of them and what they can expect from you. Treating everybody fairly is gonna help and is gonna help foster a strong community. I think if everyone knows, knows the rules, knows how they're gonna be evenly applied, I think, I think that's beneficial, you know. Like I said, we're a second family, so it's, it's important to make sure we keep those relationships going. Did I miss anything there? Sorry.
You got them all.
All right. If you haven't noticed, I ramble at times. Don't feel free, rein me back in a little bit.
Lieutenant Ware, just, what type of management style have you developed? And what tools are you use, do you use to motivate your team?
I think leadership style is try to delegate some. Try to allow people that work under you to develop their skills. If you make all the decisions for everybody, then when it comes time, like, like the gas emergencies and people have to make decisions on their own and you're not there, they don't have the skills. Being able to allow people to take some ownership, if you're doing a training or something, allow somebody, take one of the senior members and allow them to run a section of the evolution, of the drill that we're doing, because it allows them to show their skills and become a little more confident in their skills. And it also helps too if younger members are hearing from, not hearing from me all the time, hear from somebody else who, who's been doing the job for a long time. I think delegation is very important, especially, you know, as you move up and you have more responsibilities and more things going on. If you try to do too much, everything suffers. You have to be able to let, delegate things out to people that can handle tasks so that you can focus on, on different, different things at the same time. Does that make sense? Now, was there a second part to that, sir?
I would just say, you know, would you like to make any closing statements beyond that?
Well, first of all, I apologize if you couldn't hear me if I mumbled or rambled on. I thank you for the opportunity to be here. Be honest with you, if you had told me three years ago I was gonna be sitting here, if you told me probably a year ago that I'd be sitting here talking about Fire Chief, I'd be, you know, my, my youngest daughter was coming home from college and my other daughter who lives with us still, told her that I was going for this, she goes, "There's no way Dad's going for that. There's no way." She goes, "He can't get off a truck and do that." But I think there's a unique opportunity here. There's gonna be so much change in the fire, fire department, like I said, turnover, so much growth in the town, so much turnover in the department. I feel it's an opportunity to try to continue the great service we've been providing to the citizens of North Andover, help develop some new programs and possibly some new efficient ways to do some things. I believe the abilities I have from my training, from the schooling I've done, has given me a, a good skill set. I know there's plenty of areas where I'm lacking, but I also know that we have some tremendous resources within the department and outside the department, within the town. And I'm smart enough to ask for help if I need it. And I want to thank you, like I said, for the opportunity to sit before you, and I appreciate your consideration for this position.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Much appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
My phone's a little bit empty today, but I have a feeling I'm not gonna be able to keep up.
Yeah.
We found the hall in the conference room either way, so.
So Melissa, from what you've, Madam, tell me what you've pointed out here that we can take this opportunity to put someone forward tonight.
Absolutely. So you can, you don't have to, but you're welcome to deliberate and, and come to a conclusion tonight. The next steps would be you voting on your preferred candidate, and then that preferred candidate would enter into negotiations with me for their contract. That's the procedure that you've taken in the past, so.
Mr. Chair, having said that, in order to move the conversation forward, very impressed with both candidates. They both have different types of skills. You know, Graham, very well spoken. John has a tremendous amount of experience. And he, he did well at the assessment center, so for that, I would motion that we move John Ware or afford him the opportunity through negotiations with you to be our next fire chief.
For discussion, I will second that.
Okay.
I don't envy you. This is a, it's a wonderful problem to have when you have two excellent candidates.
You just took my opening remarks.
Sorry.
It's fine. I mean.
I do that.
I wanted to say, you know, this job that we sit with, we sit here and we get elected to can be very difficult at times. And this is one of those very difficult times when you have two very good candidates for one position and you have to make a choice between the two of them. And it, it really is. It's, it's not easy to do this. So, you know, I think we just, you know, talking about it is, is gonna be helpful. You know, I, I think, I, like I said, both tremendous candidates. I think in this case, experience is what I look for. Lieutenant Ware has been on the department for quite a while and has seen a lot, and I think that experience affords him the opportunity to perform at a high level as chief, being both his personal and professional backgrounds, I think, puts him in a good position to, to lead the department for the next couple of years anyway, until, you know, until he makes his decision to follow Chief McCarthy up to Lake Winnipesaukee. But I think, I think it really puts him in a, it puts him in a strong position. And I think having Graham as a deputy and potentially the next chief, being, you know, having a longer tenure than Lieutenant Ware, I think, you know, that puts us, gives us a really strong leadership team at the, at the department as we have today, and it keeps that. And I think with a lot of these, you know, a lot of the younger firefighters coming in, and as Lieutenant Ware said, 25% are gonna be, you know, less than a couple of years on the department. I think that a strong leadership team focused on training would be very beneficial to these younger members coming up. And, you know, as, as, just like President Man dealy said, you know, as Man dealy said, training is so important, and it was pointed out by Lieutenant Ware too, that, you know, training is what really saves lives. And the ability to make decisions on their own without having to be told what to do when they have to do that. So I think that's an important aspect.
I, I agree with that. You know, when he was being modest, being well-trained in training, no pun intended at all, but training, the, the knowledge under fire to, to know what the next steps are. And, and as I've said before, and I said it again tonight, I could not miss the opportunity to thank them all again, is they performed admirably well, not just North Andover, but everybody that came to help us. So I, I, I agree with that, but there were a couple of other reasons that I think support the decision for John Ware is that he did do well on the assessment center. He has great educational background. He has great certifications. And as Dick just said, he's got tremendous amount of experience in, in leadership roles as well. Graham did very well, and I agree with how you phrased it and put it, that I think there's still a very good opportunity for Graham. But I, I feel really good about putting his name forward, John Ware's name forward, so.
So this, such a big decision for us, to be appointing one of our leaders in town. And to have two candidates that are so well-qualified, I think we're so fortunate for that. But I agree about the fact that we have such a young department, and keeping the experience at the top, I think is gonna be so helpful for them to continue the training. And the 25%, I didn't realize until we started going through this process that 25% of our department is, doesn't have more than two years under their belt. And it's by practice that they learn fighting fires, and I think 60% of their calls are medical too. So they don't see a lot of fires in North Andover, so I think that, which is a good thing, right?
We've had enough to cover us for a long time.
We have, right. We've had so many in the past two years between COVID and Columbia Gas. And I still, just hearing them talk about the call, the 911 call, I still haven't listened to it because it was so, it's so hard to listen to. But they all worked so well together, and the, their training is a testament to why we were as safe as we were during that. But I agree, I, I really liked John, Lieutenant Ware's educational background. You can tell he's a hands-on leader, and he is, you know, he's, he's willing to help and teach and give his knowledge. And I love that he said that, you know, you have to delegate and you have to allow those below you to grow and learn so that they too can come up the ranks, because he's right, if they don't learn, they can't make the decisions on their own. And I think the other thing that he said that I really, really liked was that he wanted to follow in Chief McCarthy's example of never, never telling somebody to do something that he wouldn't do himself. And my mom has always said that to me, as though she's worked out through, you know, her many years. She's like, "I would never ask my staff to do something that I wouldn't do myself." So that really resonated with me. And, you know, having Graham and his experience as he remains in deputy, I think is so valuable to the, to the department, so.
You have all covered most of the points that I would want to also, you know, also make. For me, what I see is the strength in that partnership between the two of them. And so in addition to all of the things that you've all mentioned, especially, you know, allowing the younger and newer people to, to learn and grow, and a focus on training, and all of these things seem critical to move the department forward. And I very much am grateful that we had two incredibly qualified candidates to choose from. Makes it a little bit hard, but I feel really optimistic and excited about the prospect of the two of them working together to move the department forward. So I absolutely can be on board with moving Lieutenant Ware forward.
I think, yeah, these are the, these are the challenges you want to have. And to me, I look at the relative differences, and again, the, the folks at home don't see the hundreds of pages of assessment that were, were done here. So, believe me, there's a lot more than just this little interview that has gone on. We've spent, all of us, I know, have spent considerable amount of time thinking about this, reading about this and so forth. And you could tell from the interviews, you know, the difference in styles. And I, I kind of, for myself, I look at this as difference between management and leadership. And you need both in a department. But I think Graham is more about management right now, and John is at that point, that's kind of zenith point of the management experience, but he's also knows how to be a leaner, leader. And I think the words that really struck that for me was talking about why doing certain things. That's what a leader does, talks about why, not just how. Talking about solidifying the group and kind of to what, you know, you've all been saying about how the two of them together can really make the, the management of the department even more than it is today. And that, that emulating, you know, the, the chief today. So I think we pull that all together. I'm in the same place. I am excited for the prospect of both of these fellows working together, side by side now in slightly different roles. And it's going to take both management because we are doing new tasks as a town, because there is training, making sure that is executed. But we also need the leadership to get people there. So I'm in full support also of, I think, you know, when you, when you put it all together, I think John Ware fits that role just a little more precisely for where we're at today and where we need to go forward.
I have your prop for it.
Thank you.
You said hundreds of pages.
Thank you, Rosary.
We all get the electronic.
I know, but I, I, I like writing notes and stuff on my stuff.
There you go. Well, any other comments? We've got a motion before us. Then with that, we have a motion to appoint John Ware as our fire chief. Effective date.
So it would be move at the Board of Selectmen, appoint John Ware as the fire chief. Let's say effective July 1st, because we actually don't have a date from Chief McCarthy yet. Effective July 1st, 2021, subject to receipt of letter relinquishing his civil service status and pending negotiation of contract with the town manager.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, all good. All right, all in favor? Aye.
So we want to take a brief recess while I run down the hall? Or you could, you know, do some of the quick things, but I, I don't want to leave them sitting there until.
No, 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 it's good. Let's just take a minute. Everybody can take a breather for one minute. That's fine. Thank you, Rosary.
I got my membership package.
Just a Mass Audubon the other day.
Oh. They'll come in handy. I'm just gonna come in and say thank you. Our new fire chief.
Thank you for taking a shot on me, and I don't plan to disappoint anybody, so. We don't think you will.
I don't think so.
Chief McCarthy's already said, one of us got there, he's gonna help you far away, so. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So you all know, Chief McCarthy has agreed to stay on as a consultant after his retirement date, and particularly because with Mike Byrne retiring from fire prevention, he is the only person who went to Oklahoma City, and we would really like his help with Amazon. So, yeah, kind of a big deal. So he's agreed to stay on, which is huge for us because he'll be a great asset to John as well. So we're really excited about that.
Fantastic.
He can't escape that easy. Got my eyes on him.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Okay, well.
That was exciting.
You made a couple of good hires tonight, I think, as a town, right?
Yeah.
There we go. All right. Let's step back, public comment, we went past that. And again, because we are under governor's orders, public comment can be submitted at www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB Public Comments. So Madam Town Manager, did we have some?
Got a few. I just want to make sure nothing else came in while you were, oh, one more came in, okay. So here we go. I'm gonna do them in the order in which they were received. And so the first one, we received on five, it says we received on 5/24, but it's 5/23, okay. And this is from Brian and Julie Roach from Coachman's Lane. Dear Select Board, we are writing today to express our strong support for the current proposal by Fireside Catering in the Mass Audubon Society regarding the operation and management of the Stevens Estate. As everyone in town agrees, the Stevens Estate, its structures and grounds are a true jewel of North Andover. It must be preserved for future generations. Despite its historic nature, the Stevens Estate is so much more than just a lookback in North Andover's history. It is a place that can be actively enjoyed for both Saturday night weddings and Sunday morning walks. It could be a showcase, showpiece for residents and non-residents alike. However, as everyone agrees, it requires substantial investment simply to maintain this property, let alone make the required capital improvements to ensure its viability for future residents. We believe that the estate should remain an owned property of the taxpayers of North Andover. The miles of trails around Lake and Chickahue must be maintained and remain open to public use. Finally, the estate must be operated as a financially viable concern. The proposed agreement with Fireside Catering and Mass Audubon will meet all three of these goals. We are fortunate to have two very professional organizations willing to partner with the town on this special property. Each of them brings their own track record of success in their specific area of expertise. In these disciplines, both Fireside and Mass Audubon have an ability to execute which will far exceed that of the town and provide all involved with the greatest likelihood of success. We applaud the efforts of the town manager and all those involved in moving this process forward. We urge the Select Board to authorize the town manager to proceed with the contemplated agreement. And there's a disclosure that Brian Roach currently serves as the Chair of the North Andover Community Preservation Committee, and any views expressed in this public comment are made as a private citizen and do not represent the views of the committee. I think I've been here two years, and that's the first time I said the Lake Chickahue, right. It's really hard, right? So every time I have to say it, I get like nervous, and I'm really proud that I got that right today, so.
That's funny, because I did ask a candidate for a job once to pronounce the name of our lake, just to see.
It's hard.
It was a long time ago.
It's really hard.
And the person did fine.
I just want to say, I'm very proud of that. I feel like I accomplished something today. All right, our next one is from Jennifer Friesen and Joe Hicks, 35 Hawthorne Place and 49 Bradford Street. First, we would like to thank the Board for approving the pride flag for the town common. We receive so much positive feedback, particularly from parents and teachers who have told us how meaningful this expression of support is to our young people. We expect to hear from several students at our flag raising event on Tuesday, June 1st at 5:00 p.m., and we invite you all to join us. Many cities and towns across Massachusetts and many here in Essex County raise a pride flag each June. In almost all of those towns, the Select Board or Mayor does this on their own, and the flag raising ceremony is a town-run event. Our process is unique in that any recognition of Pride Month has to be requested annually by a resident, and the application is considered on equal terms as a request from any other group. In our view, a recognition of civil rights is of universal interest and importance to the community and should not be subject to annual approval. That is what LGBTQ plus Pride Month is about, civil rights, the historic struggle for them, a celebration of those who have, that have been won, and a renewal of our commitment to the continued work of expanding them to include all people. We are not a club, a cause, or a belief system. We are residents of this town, asking to be acknowledged, supported, and celebrated. Violence and discrimination stemming from intolerance continue to take lives and create barriers to equity and opportunity for LGBTQ plus people. There are many actions that you, as our elected representatives, can take to help ensure our full inclusion, equal protection, and lived equality. The most basic tool you have at your disposal is your platform to communicate. We already state our town's commitment to full inclusion as part of the raised values we teach children from the day they enter the North Andover public school system. This is an opportunity to demonstrate those values. There are LGBTQ plus students in classrooms in every school in this town, and they are paying attention. What you do as leaders impacts all of us, but especially them. What we are asking for with this proclamation is recognition of the existence of LGBTQ plus people in North Andover, recognition of our history and struggle for civil rights, and acknowledgement that there is still so much to be done to end discrimination, to increase understanding and inclusion, to ensure protection, sorry, from disproportionately high incidence of harassment and violence, and affirm our right to fully, and to exist and fully participate in. in all areas of public life. We don't think we should wait for an injustice or worse, a tragedy, to speak a member of this town's LGBTQ+ community before a representative speak out in support. You have the opportunity to leave North Andover forward to a brighter future for all residents. We hope you will take it. On theirs, they do note to call them live. I know they are the proponent of one of the items tonight, so maybe that would be a good time to do that? Okay. Oh, and they're already on, so even better, okay. All right, the next one we have is Sarah Tompkins on Mean Street. My name is Sarah Tompkins. I live in North Andover as a community member and work as a teacher for the North Andover School District at NAMSS. I am the Gay Street Alliance Advisor for the middle school for the last four years. I am writing on behalf of myself, my students, and their classmates. The students in my group are so over the moon, excited to know that there will be a community progressive flag raising in their hometown this coming June. They asked me to reach out to you to speak up for them and to express how much they see this flag flying as a symbol of a safe and inclusive environment. With this flag raising in North Andover, we are all standing up for individuals in the LGBTQ+ community and their allies. We say that we welcome all to North Andover and that we are committed to making this town a comfortable safe zone for everyone. We recognize by flying this flag in June, North Andover prioritizes marginalized communities and does not accept hate toward others. Please consider the North Andover Pride Project's proposal to fly this flag toward the entire month of June as a symbol of inclusion and hope for all. As a member having a discussion on these decisions, please take into consideration that some of our youngest community constituents truly see this as a symbol of their community reaching out to say you belong. These individuals need your voice supporting them the most. Thank you for your time and continued service to our town. Best regards. Okay, the next one is Eva Lockery of Osgood Street. As a young member of the LGBT community and a resident of North Andover, seeing a visible show of support for my town would mean so much to me and many people I know. The rainbow flag is a symbol of acceptance and inclusivity, and I believe that seeing it fly in our town would provide a sense of belonging to us. It is important that our community embraces LGBT residents, especially during Pride Month, and this is an important step toward that goal that I hope we can all take forever. Together, sorry. Okay, the next one is Kristy Heel of Lacy Street. I am very concerned about the contract about to be signed with the catering company for the management of the Stevens Estate. I have read through the contract wording and have numerous concerns, one of which is how it impacts groups of nonprofits here in North Andover who use Stevens Estate for different activities. I'm a very involved member of the Friends of the Stevens Memorial Library. We just conducted a very successful library sale under the tent this past weekend. Based on my understanding of the wording of the contract, it looks like the use of the facility by our group, which financially supports library programming, may not be included at all. But if it is, does it fall under town use? Does it count against the 12 events in a year? We need it for three days at a time. Would this be three events of the 12? Would we be subject to a rental fee? Currently, we are not. Furthermore, the city currently holds movies. The library currently holds movies under the tent during the summer, as well as other activities. Would that still be allowed into this contract? If so, would those days be counted against the 12 uses? I've read other documents that are still in the Stevens Estate file. There is one of particular concern, which is dated August 10th of 2020, which questions multiple issues that do not seem to be answered yet. Is there a reason why we haven't looked into answering these questions before we considered signing a 10-year lease with an outside company? Also, why 10 years? Why not three to five, with the ability to extend the contract? Just so you know, I did answer her. And there's one more on my computer that came in after we came in here. Hold on one second, please. Okay. Kanto Vera Brockhousen, did I say it right? Brockhousen, sorry. Okay. And she says we can call her live, so hold on one second. She's also on, okay. So do we want to wait and take her comment during that, too? All right. So, okay, we'll do that. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience while I read those terribly. I did my best. Thank you.
And maybe one of the last times she has to do it.
Could be one of the last times. You do get kind of dry mouth while you're reading that much in a mask. All right, thank you.
Okay, so I covered our public comments. So back now to our agenda. We've confirmed our town clerk, so we're now to the request of Joe Hicks and Jennifer Friesen on the proclamation regarding Pride Month. So, and I think Joe and Jen are with us, right? Can we hear them?
Hi.
Hello.
Hey, there you go. So tell us.
So one of the reasons we're coming back, we think it's really important that, we really appreciate the opportunity to fly the flag, to go through that approval process, but we also feel like it's really important that this action comes from the town on an annual basis to really welcome community members into the, into North Andover. I think it means more when the town takes the action to put the flag up and to say, "You are welcome here," rather than coming from citizens on an annual basis.
Yeah, and we think that this fits really perfectly with the values that we already express as a community, so it seems like a logical next step to just come out and say that we are celebrating this civil rights issue, and we're going to do it in perpetuity, so.
Good. Questions from our board here?
Comments? I wholeheartedly believe that this is an opportunity for us to be very clear about our values as a community and what we want, you know, the world to know about us as a community. So I completely am on board that this can and should be a regular occurrence. It is definitely a civil rights issue and not, you know, nothing less than that. So it's a little bit different than some of the other things that we come across in town, and it's a really great opportunity for our students especially. I mean, it's certainly important for all of our community, but I think the impact on our young students is probably where we will have the most significance, and I think it's, you know, again, a great way for us to show our values and that we are inclusive, we are an inclusive community who supports everyone, so. I think it's a, I'm grateful that they have organized around this and presented this proclamation to us with many, many, like 150 signatures of support, so that also speaks to me that this is community-driven. It's not often that we get, you know, that much input. And, you know, as members of the Board, we're here to represent the community, so I think this is a great opportunity for us.
So I am in support of raising the flag for the month of June. The only thing I would say is that, and I said this at the last meeting, I received more positive email about this request than anything in my nine years on the Board. And that's, I mean, not just positive, any email at all about any one topic. I received more email about this. So that says a lot to the, putting in the request, because people, it gives you that visibility, it gives people that, you know, the ability to really resonate around it. But I'm fully supportive of doing it in perpetuity. I think we may have to change our bylaw a bit, but I think it's an opportunity, though, for people to really express their opinions about it and express their thoughts and email, you know, email us about it and the public comment and everything. So I hope we don't lose that momentum if we, you know, just becomes an every-year thing that we don't get that rallying around it, so people, again, you know, we get letters from young people, we get letters from all walks of life, so it's really, it was really amazing, the number of emails and letters that we received, so. That's my two cents.
I think just for me to echo what Selectman Van Fort and Selectman Phillips had said, you know, the public comment that we've received and the show of support, the 150 signatures, is really a testament to how important this is to our community. It's an opportunity for us to uphold the raised values in our school system. I think that's probably the best thing we do in our school system, is those raised values, and we teach them to our children from kindergarten, probably preschool, all the way up through high school. And the most important one is inclusion, and that people feel that they're welcome here, and that they know that they have a place here, and that they will be welcomed. And I think that we, as leaders, need to uphold that, and we need to celebrate the diversity in our community, and this is one way to do that.
I certainly support what you're doing, but I tend to lean more, what Dick was just saying, in order to get the exposure is to come before the Board of Selectmen. And it's not just that, there are other protected classes who also, did something? Did I say something? You both went off the screen at the same time. There are other protected classes as well that we also ask to come. And I think, I think that that is the policy, and I think it's the policy for a reason, so that we can offer it to the different groups as they come forward. But I think to do it every year, every single group we have comes before us, whether you're having an event on the common, if you're, whatever group it is. And I do agree, I think it's actually, calls attention to it and gives people time to speak and act on it, which I think is probably even more important. I do get concerned that it will just sort of get lost, but I absolutely support this. But I do think that as a matter of protocol and policy, there's nothing wrong with coming forward and making the request.
Well, I would like to say that one of the pleasures that we have as a Board is to make policy and to decide what that is. And what I'm hearing from this, our group here, our body today, is that because this is about civil rights, something that shouldn't have to take a special proclamation, we accept and expect civil rights as being an American citizen, but yet this is what we have to do, to, your point, really make sure that there's inclusion and understanding broadly. I think we have the opportunity to really make that clearer and stronger, and then celebrate it annually as it is part of the fabric of the town, right? So I see us as using this as an opportunity to establish this, just as we establish sheep sharing in this town, right? And we've established other festivals and traditions, right? Those come up to get licensed each year, but that is part of who we are as a community, and we have the opportunity to say the same thing with this. So I'd like to see if we can find a way, and I don't know the mechanics of that, to make it sync up with our flag policy, because that's, that seems to be the only tripping point that we've got here. But I, that's just sort of my personal feeling. I don't know if other members feel the same way, trying to find that solution.
Definitely. I'm not overly concerned about this getting lost in the shuffle, because I do see a lot of activism in the community around this issue, and I think it actually just makes people feel more welcome and more included and more likely to be supportive, and that's ultimately what we're going for. So I don't know, again, seems slightly different than some of the other issues that we've addressed, because it is a civil rights issue, and I don't know if there's a way to just make an exception to the policies strictly for this, you know, that, we'll go to the experts, and then, you know, take those things, there might be something else in the future that falls into the same category, or there may not be, but we can take those things as they come, but legitimizing the residents of our community as all being welcome here is a huge first step, so.
I think as a matter of process, we don't have the flag policy on the agenda tonight, so I think we would need to have some, have that re-looked at, and then potentially make some suggestions for changes that would support, you know, what it is we're talking about, having a dedicated timeframe for, to fly the flag, so. But I think, you know, we don't have it open in front of us, and Mr. Chair, that's your call, but I don't think, it's not on the agenda tonight.
No, I mean, that's the other piece of it, it's, the policy change is not on the agenda, but I, I guess I didn't, I don't see preparing it and announcing it and being allowed, we, every single thing we approve, whether it, and all of them are civil rights issues, for the most part, you know, that it's somebody's opportunity to speak into and enjoy life and make a statement. So I don't, I don't see it, I guess I see it a little different. I don't see it as a negative to your group by just asking for the event. I see that frankly as a positive and as an announcement, too. But, but you obviously feel differently, and I respect that, and I have, and I have supported the flag raising. I just do worry a little bit about that if we have other groups that are also, you know, it's, this is real estate language, and that's what I am, a protected class in, that we can't do, we can't do for one group and not do for the other, and that's a bit of a problem, because then...
I think we can probably cross that, those, that bridge as we come to it on an individual basis. It may not ever come up again, and if it does, we take it, you know, one piece at a time.
But I think, I think the way the discrimination law reads is that we need to treat everybody equally and the same.
And everybody has the opportunity to bring forth their...
So that's, that's just my concern. I, you know, I think it has to be crafted in such a way that we are not hurting another group that has had its troubles with discrimination. And believe me, I don't think there's a person in this room that does not know and love people of the LGBTQ+ community, and nobody wants to see them feeling hurt or set aside in any way, so I, and I speak for myself as I say that as well, but I don't think there's anyone in this room that doesn't appreciate the struggles that have taken place through the years. And again, we're celebrating it in a few days, actually, so. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a good move in the right direction, but I, I'm someone of protocol, I'm someone who's very concerned about laws, and I just want to make sure whatever we do, we do it so that it doesn't pose another problem in another, in another direction that nobody foresaw coming, so. But it'll be here before you know it, and as you said, it will be, set a great example for everybody.
Is it necessary to rework the entire policy in order to do this, or is it possible to just grant this exception, I guess, and say that we will recognize June as Pride Month, and we will fly a flag every year, and as an exception to the rest of the, you know, the standing policy and...
Do you ask me a tricky question?
We can always...
It is a tricky question.
Right, we can always make a decision, because it's, it's, when you think about policy, right, it's a policy, it's not a law, right? We create a policy to govern as many situations as we can, and sometimes policies don't always work for every situation. I'm a very process-driven person, generally. Might be the lawyer in me, I don't know, but, so I'm always angst to not think through any time I amend a policy or make an exception to a policy, because I, you know, I think down, down the line, right? And I, one of my concerns, I think, about, about not amending the policy before making this vote, is that, you know, we, we don't have, by not having the policy on the agenda, we're not giving any other groups the opportunity that might say, "Hey, wait a minute."
Sure.
"I have this in June, and I really want that recognized, too," right? And one of the things that we have to be really careful about is treating everyone equally and the same, right? And so when we created this policy, the thought was, we'll create a policy, because everyone will be treated equally and the same, and nobody will have an argument that they're being treated differently, right? Whether in good intention or bad intention, right? And sometimes in our best intentions, we end up sliding someone without realizing it. And that's not to say that I don't think we should proclaim every June Pride Month. I'm sad that I'm going to be on vacation and unable to come to your pride flag raising, because I would have loved to be there. But I think that what may make the most sense here is for us to issue the proclamation with maybe some slightly amended language and with the, with the opportunity for us to look at our flag policy at the next meeting and say, "Hey, do we want to carve out certain months," right? Are there organizations that want certain months carved out for them that we could carve out every year, right? Or do we want to continue this way? But I think that it needs to be a really holistic conversation with everybody who might be impacted. And because we don't have it on the agenda in that way, I think that we may be alienating some groups that we don't know. I think that we may be alienating some groups that we don't know about yet. And so, you know, I'm split, because I think the proclamation is really important. I think it's really important that we embrace everyone who lives in North Andover. I know I feel embraced here, and I want everyone to feel that way. But I also don't want to say, hey, let's wait till the next meeting on June 7th, because honestly, we miss a week of Pride Month, and that would stink. So my thought is, you know, do we ask them respectfully to let us remove just that one whereas with the commitment that we put it on the next agenda and have this bigger conversation? And maybe we do get to have the last three weeks of Pride Month with the proclamation being that the flag will be raised forever. But I think having that conversation is really important.
Madam Town Manager, we've already approved the raising in the month of June, so that wouldn't be impacted by the proclamation.
No, you have your regular right. The only thing that really impacts is moving forward, right, the next year.
So let me suggest this. Do we not have more than one flag pole in this town?
We have a lot of flag poles.
All right, so let's do this. Let me suggest this to both, I think, what everybody's trying to say here, which is, we're all committed to this, we all want to recognize it. We want this done for June, not, we're in June and we're figuring out the policy. To me, that's almost disrespectful of the significance of this. If we can't figure this out tonight, I'm disappointed in us. And I'm being very severe here right now. That's because that's how significant this is. And we shouldn't let figuring out what flag pole, or if it can go on a flag pole, to stop us. And so I would propose that we go forward with this, because we have a flag pole that we could commit to this.
That's what Melissa said though.
Also doesn't preclude other groups from requesting June.
That doesn't preclude other groups. So we could take it as is.
Absolutely.
As is. Now, we can go back next month and, again, look at the holistic policy and make sure. And by the way, I would say to other folks that are looking at this, this is, this, to me, might be an empowering opportunity, because those other groups that may not have their, that feel diminished or haven't had the opportunity, this is an empowering moment, because it's saying, there's a community here that's willing to stand for the right things, for civil rights, and we will find a way to make sure that you're recognized. And to me, finding a solution tonight also is a way to say to those other groups, we are going to find a way, if there is that other group. Because don't forget, we've had this conversation 14 months ago about conflict with flags and, you know, what if there are multiple requests in a month, right? We've had 14 months, and we've had three requests.
Two of which-
Two of which are the same, okay? So, as I said, I'd like to see us find a way tonight, I really would. And I know I'm pressing us all a little bit, but Madam Town Manager, I hear where you're at.
It's the rule follower in me.
No, it's good.
It is, no, no, it's okay. So I think if you were going to go that route, what I would say is, the motion, we should have some kind of suspension of the policy motion. That's typically what I would suggest, with the reason why, and then vote. Just because that way you have, in your minutes, moving forward, the reason why you did it, if we did, in fact, have a future lawsuit or anything.
Okay, and again, I know I'm pressing.
Yeah, I would recommend if the will of the board is to take action tonight that is not in concert with your current policy, then typically what I would recommend is, as part of your motion, that you would have a suspension of your policy with the reason why. That way, if we did someday have another group that was a suspect class come forward and make an argument that they're being treated differently, we would have the reasons listed in this motion and in the minutes.
So are you saying that, all of that sounds good. And you've said it so much better than I about, I'm a rule taker, a law follower. I mean, I get very hung up in that language, because even in this town, we had a bad result once a long time ago, because it probably wasn't done well. And that's the last thing that I want, I don't want any group hurt or feeling displaced that has good reason to share their beliefs and their time in the sun. And I'm not saying it well, because I'm just feeling awkward, because I'm going to be honest, we want this to happen. We understand that it's important to a lot of people and a lot of people who are important to us. I just want to do it the right way, so we don't get ourselves into a problem. So suspend-
You're going to suspend your policy.
For this evening, or-
For just this one item.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that, I agree with you that it does help with any potential lawsuit of discrimination for not treating everybody equally and fair. And that's not what, and I'm sure that you guys don't want to do that either. You don't want to treat another group unfairly either. So I, again, forgive me for not explaining it well, but I just want to make sure that we do it the right way. Having said that, I'm willing to make that motion. If you want to say it all back again, please.
The motion would be to suspend the flag raising policy in order to approve the request of Joe Hicks and Jennifer Fresen for a proclamation regarding Pride Month. And then I would recommend that some of the reasons that you've listed so far in conversation be included in the reasons why. And so some of the reasons that I heard was that because we want to maintain our raise values here in the community, and so we want to build a commitment to inclusivity through all of our demographics, that, you know, it's something that we want to embrace annually. We think that it's an important part of making everyone feel welcome here in the community. I don't know if you have anything to add, we're happy to add it, but.
So just to be clear, though, the proclamation is really, I guess, the power of the proclamation is that once it is voted on and adopted, it becomes actually something that would be executed in perpetuity? Okay, I just wanted to clarify on that.
So we're suspending our flag policy, potentially till our next meeting, where we will amend it.
Just for this one item.
We have a motion, just need a second.
She said it more than once, much better than I've been speaking.
I will second that motion.
We'll deal the discussion on it when we've all got it straight, okay? All in favor of that motion to suspend, say aye.
To suspend, yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Town Manager.
Yes, for helping us navigate it.
So now to the underlying issue. And hey, by the way, I think we should read this proclamation.
Yes, and also don't forget, I'm sorry, you did have a public comment, who I believe may be on the Vera.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes, we don't want to forget Vera.
Yes, please, please. Please, Vera.
Am I up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration. This is of affirming the meaning for everybody in this town. It is also a health and safety issue, particularly for, I think we've heard a couple of comments already about how LGBTQIA+ youth, particularly trans youth, are often at elevated risk of harm. And as community support increases, so too does that risk for harm decrease, seeing a public, visible sign of the support of their town. And I'm speaking for myself as a member of that community. Seeing the public, visible support of our town for queer identity is enormous. And queer identity is not like a gym membership. It doesn't increase in value when you're made to work for support of it. So I want to push back a little bit against the concerns that I've heard that somehow this will decrease in value if people don't have to come to you and ask for it every year. It's actually the opposite, knowing that our town is ready to put up that flag and say, you are welcome here, and not, you know, it's different to hear, everybody is welcome, than it is to hear, you, Vera, you are welcome and invited. Naming has a lot of power, and a flag is a way to do that in one visible, annual method with a minimum of effort without making people work to ask that their identity be recognized and supported. So I think the town has a wonderful opportunity here. I'm delighted that it seems that you're going to take it, and I want to offer my strongest support for this motion and invite you to remember the power of being recognized for who you truly are. And if the worst thing that comes out of this is that you have other people empowered to come forward and ask for the same, how wonderful would that be for our town to celebrate many identities in a visible and permanent way? Thank you for your time.
The last summation was great, thank you so much for saying that. How wonderful will it be to have all groups feel very welcome in the town? I agree. Oh, there you go, that all makes sense then.
Janice, I'm going to ask you to read the proclamation. You're the one that's really brought this to us and championed it, so please.
Thank you. Whereas the select board of North Andover recognizes and proclaims each June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month throughout North Andover. And whereas North Andover observes Pride Month with a pride flag raising ceremony to honor the history of the LGBTQ+ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the pride flag will be raised and displayed throughout each June, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our community make North Andover a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. And whereas the pride flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support of LGBTQ+ people in society. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ+ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas the town of North Andover always embraces the raised values of respect, achievement, inclusion, service, and empathy. And whereas the town of North Andover is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents and preventing discrimination and mistreatment based on sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas the town of North Andover is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our diverse community. And we affirm our support for our LGBTQ residents and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear. And whereas the town of North Andover is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of all its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our town. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for North Andover's LGBTQ+ community, it is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it resolved that North Andover Select Board hereby proclaims each June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And we urge all residents to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists.
Now I know how you feel reading all this.
Thank you, Janice, thank you. So with that, if there's any other discussion, otherwise I ask for a motion.
You have one, right? You gave it earlier, it was long.
Okay.
That was the suspend.
That was just a-
This is the rule, so yeah, you could, okay.
So now we would make a motion to accept the Pride Month proclamation as presented to us by North Andover.
Second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you for your patience, and we're very proud as a community. Thank you. You bet. There you go.
Thank you, I'll be your hard mic.
Okay, next, request of Amanda Elprint to use the town common on July 17, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for a community event to promote general wellness. And do we have somebody to speak to this?
The justice actually you approved last year, but because of COVID, you didn't have it. They couldn't have it, so this is trying to get it settled.
So they're expecting 50 people total, no more than 25 at a time. All of the restrictions will be lifted by that point.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Appreciate it. There's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
2-5-0, all good, okay. Next, we have a request of the festival committee to use the town common on July 4, 2021, from noon to 1:00 p.m. for reading of the Declaration of Independence. And do we have somebody from the festival committee?
We have Jeff Coco.
Yeah, all right, there he is. Hey, Jeff.
Jeff Coco, 695A Johnson Street. We are facilitating this event in conjunction with the Friends of the 1836 Meeting House and the Historical Society. You're looking for much more information than I can provide. John Lenoff is here, he's on screen as well. And any questions really should be directed to him, because he has all the pertinent details about the event.
Well, we've got the full information in the packet. And, you know, we're hoping that this is an event that, you know, a lot of people can attend now with, you know, different protocols than we were a year ago. So a different kind of celebration, hopefully, this year. John, anything else you'd want to add while you have us here?
Well, we'd hope to make this an annual event. We did the first one last year with North Andover Cam via video. It's really modeled after something that James Ward and I had seen in other towns and thought we'd bring it to North Andover. We're looking at reading several documents and speeches through the history of the United States that are related to the Declaration of Independence. And all men are created equal, or all people are created equal. So we've got several speakers coming, our state reps, Tromwyn and Christina Minicucci will be here, several other speakers of lesser local renown than those. But there's some music as well that's related to the speeches being read. So we look forward to doing this, and so glad we can do it live on the common.
Great, that's excellent, John, thank you very much.
Can I ask the million dollar question? Are we considering any other festivities for April?
Oh, Jeff, I think Jeff has a bad connection, and he needs to get off.
No, we've been having a lot of conversations about other festivities.
Boy, have we.
Yes, and we may delay some because of the short timeframe of notice of us being able to open up. It's relatively hard to get that together. So we may, I believe, combine it with some of the things that we're going to learn about the 375th coming up.
We've got some fun things coming our way, so.
Right, so we promise there's going to be a lot of festivities this year. We're all excited, but they may not be as soon as we all wish they were going to be.
And we might, we maybe even might be combining a couple events together, because, again, we really couldn't plan that far out because of COVID. And all of a sudden, the doors are open, and it's like, okay.
Not enough leeway.
Right, but it's all going to be good.
Yes.
It's all going to be good.
It's going to be a great year, right, Jeff?
Awesome.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if you're ready.
I'm ready to go.
I'll move that the board has selected and approved the request of the festival committee to use the town common on July 4, 2021, from noon until 1:30 p.m. for a reading of the Declaration of Independence.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
2-5-0, okay, we got our 4th of July set up, the next thing going. We'll see you there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next is confirm the appointment of Kelly Cormier as a full member of the planning board.
So we have two people who are not being renewed on the planning board and decided not to continue, they're coming up on their last day. And Kelly has been such a great associate member, so we're really excited to be able to move her into a full member. It's going to make it great for the projects that are ongoing right now, because they'll have that kind of stability. And then we've posted for another associate member and a full member, which we will be coming soon. So if people at home are interested in being a member of the planning board or an associate member of the planning board, we tell everybody it is a fun and fulfilling committee. I believe some of you may have served on the planning board at some time, maybe.
Zoning.
Zoning, okay. So we hope to, we'll get lots of great resumes, and I'm sure we will.
That's great. Yeah, very, uh, seeing, uh, Kelly Cormier on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and she is just, you know, dedicated and, and really works hard, so, uh, great. She's, she gets the full duty now.
She said yes right away.
There you go.
In her response, and I was like, yes, this is great, so.
Thank you, Kelly.
We're psyched.
Much appreciated.
So, Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Kelly Cormier as a full member of the Planning Board for a term ending June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
2-5-0. Welcome, Kelly. Okay. Uh, next, uh, vote to authorize our Town Manager to sign contracts in excess of three years for fireside catering and Mass Audubon in relation to the Stevens Estate.
So as you all know, anytime I want to sign a contract that's more than three years, I have to come before the Board of Selectmen per our Town Meeting vote to ask for permission. Um, this is very exciting that we're here tonight talking about this. Um, none of the terms have changed from what I shared with you at our last meeting, although I am happy to quickly run through them again if you'd like me to. What you'd be doing tonight is authorizing, um, the signature of the term sheet, the signature of the final contract, which really is just the term sheet with a bunch of whereas at the beginning, and, um, but don't tell Susie and Beck, she worked really hard on it, um, but it just kind of memorializes the term sheet. Um, and then also the eventual, um, management contract with Mass Audubon, and then you would need to approve the Mass Audubon conservation restriction later.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so basically, if you remember how that process works, um, we have it on Town Meeting as Article 9, the, um, would transfer the care and custody of the property that is the open space for conservation purposes to the Conservation Commission, and then would authorize both you and the Conservation Commission to enter into an agreement to basically run or manage those properties. And so we, we kind of have a belt and suspenders thing going on. We'd be entering into the management agreement first because one of the really priorities I've heard from all of you is that we need to protect that land, and so come, uh, whatever we have to do to get that done, we're gonna do it. So we're gonna have a lot of, um, separate documents here. Um, we're gonna have, everyone, it's kind of interesting and maybe a little bit confusing why we don't have Mass Audubon in the term sheet, right? We, we talk about them, we talk about the third party, we don't name them, um, and that's, that's kind of purposeful. Um, one, because God forbid Mass Audubon ceased to exist, we still want, um, the Weber Group, Restaurant Group, to always maintain the, the need and the, um, requirement to manage that property with that nonprofit partner. Um, two, if in 10 years fireside catering no longer is a party, we want to make sure we still have the agreement with Mass Audubon to continue to do the management and custody that they had agreed to do. So we, we've separated them, uh, but I also anticipate there may end up being a tri-party agreement where we kind of memorialize things as well. Um, so the terms have not changed since when I was here two weeks ago, um, all the same. Um, tomorrow morning I will see the Weber's, so if you do authorize this tonight, tomorrow morning I will see the Weber's because they're bringing, um, somebody from, um, the Isabella Garden Museum to look at the painting at 9:00 AM, so, um, we're really excited about that. So that's that.
Wow, it's a long journey.
It's been a journey, right?
We're almost there, but.
Yeah.
A worthy journey and a, and a tremendous destination.
We're so excited, um, about it, and just, you know, after Kathy, um, came last week to, um, have the senior center appointment and was talking about the great community partnership that she has with them, it made me feel even better and more optimistic about it. Yeah, because that was such an organic thing to have happen, right? I didn't even think of it, um, but it just made me feel all that much better about where we're going, so.
Let's get this thing on the road.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the Select Board authorize the Town Manager to sign contracts in excess of three years for fireside catering and Mass Audubon in relation to the Stevens Estate.
I'll second.
Appreciate it. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to make one comment, and I think, uh, going through this process, I think what we've all kind of taken away is the community partnership from fireside, from the Weber family, because it really is a family business, um, and I know that we're all, we all have a fear of change and moving forward, and we don't want to lose access to the estate, but I think that at the end of the day, it's really gonna increase access to the estate, and I don't think that they're gonna, they're gonna let us keep doing, they want to be part of our community, and we wanna, um, they don't want to shut us out.
You're absolutely right. From all the conversations we've had, they've made that abundantly clear, and, um.
And I think we just want to express, you know, that we didn't get here, um, haphazardly. They really are gonna be such a good community partner, um, and I, I truly believe we'll see some great benefits from this partnership.
And, and again, the Audubon people, they were great. They just, this is so exciting through all the whole, so they're, they are really excited and have some great ideas that I hope that they will be able to bring forward in the next few years. Really good.
And they're coming for a site visit soon. Um, if any of you want to attend their site visit, as long as you didn't deliberate, you're all welcome to come. I'm gonna be on vacation, so Lori and Andrew and many other people will be representing, um, the town as well, but I'll send the date to all of you in case you want to be there, and the President of Mass Audubon is coming, so it's really exciting.
Yeah, I'd love to be there.
It's a pretty good night here for us. It's a, it's a town, huh? Got a lot of things coming together.
Just a, a little bit of information. Mass Audubon was, was started by two women.
Really? Wonderful.
Yeah.
About a hundred years, over a hundred years ago. Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't like the plumes coming out of the ladies' hats back in the day, the real feather plume.
Interesting.
Okay. So, all in favor? Aye. All right, 2-5-0. We are good to go. Make that all happen, Town Manager.
I just want to say thank you, because it's, this has been a process, I know that, but, um, you have all put a lot of faith in that process, and I think that we're gonna end up with a really great product, so thank you for all your support in getting this done.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, and, uh, we've got a couple of appointments here. Eileen Donovan Elliott is a full member of the Council on Aging, so we appreciate, um, her moving into that full membership role, and, um.
I would move approval.
All right, thank you. Do you have a second?
Yeah, are we taking those together or?
Uh, separately.
Okay. I would second that.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Eileen, full-time, and then Melander Taylor to the Cultural Council.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask you the?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and I hate to be a stickler, and I know I'm the worst, but just the end date of June 30th, 2023 on both of them, because it will cause Lori a lot of problems later when she's trying to implement it into the system.
Oh, yes, yes.
We're trying to figure out when people are done, and yeah.
No, we, no.
So you could even take it together if you wanted now, um, but just move the Select Board to appoint Eileen Elliott as a full member of the Council on Aging, and Melander Taylor to the Cultural Council, both the terms ending on June 30th, 2023. We do not want to have any trouble later as we try to figure this out.
That has been a crucial thing.
It is.
Thank you for that. So I'll accept that friendly amendment. Um, should we, one more time, just vote accepting of the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 2-5-0. Okay, Lori, saved you one headache, hopefully.
I would just have to.
She's not here.
Oh, jeez. Now you know how Town Hall works, right? Oh, gosh. Okay, um, so with that, I just need a motion to move into licensing, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we move into, um, the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Thank you. Have a second?
Have a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All you are.
Thank you. We are, we are now in, in licensing, so we have requested Ash, Ashley Piazza of Smolak Farms for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for Wim dinners, um, in the event tent on June 23rd, 2021, from 5:00 to 9:00.
Ma'am Chair, just on a point of personal privilege, I just want to recognize Mike Smolak.
Oh, I was about to do that.
You do it, you do it. I'm so happy for him.
Uh, yes, this was, he had a celebration, uh, congratulations to, um, Michael Smolak, his name was a little different from what I, I don't know, I, I only know him as Michael, um, for 50 years of himself running Smolak Farm. It was a family business started many years ago, um, and he was called home due to the death of his father from college to run the farm, and he's been doing it for 50 years, and he, with this anniversary event, he is also looking for donations to have a scholarship for, um, a young person who wants to go into the agriculture industry. So if you want to celebrate his 50th, I'm sure he would be happy to take donations of any amount, and yeah, he was, it's, yeah, he was so excited about the whole thing, and it was.
I was able to stop by on Thursday, and it was quite the party. I was like, whoa, Nellie! Uh, but everyone was there celebrating him, and it was really, really nice, um, to see his family all kind of around him and.
It would, yeah.
What an impact he's made on the community.
Very exciting, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we didn't, we get a motion yet?
I know, we were too excited. A motion for congratulations. I know we were tripping over ourselves on that.
Uh, move, uh, let's see, uh, lost track here for a second. Here we go. Oh, move that the Board, the Select Board, acting as licensing commissioners, approve the request of Ashley Piazza of Smolak Farms for a one-day wine and malt license for a Wim dinner on June 2nd, 2021, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM.
Give a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second.
Hold on, here, Lori. What, Lori? June 23rd.
Oh, it's, it says second.
Uh-oh. June 23rd.
June 23rd, okay.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is, request from Tarek Alahamad of Mama Mia Italian Kitchen LLC for a common victualist license at 1814 Turnpike Street, and favorable recommendations from police, fire, and building inspector.
Ma'am Chair, Berkeley, the proponent is with us on the screen.
Yes, great.
Hello? I'm sorry.
There we go.
Excuse my lack of listening. It's my best pizza business. I don't know how the process goes.
Um, this is great opportunity actually for you right now, um, is for you to talk about your new business, um, the offerings that you have there, and, um, tell us, um, maybe it would be helpful to tell us about where you are located on Turnpike Street because it is such a long street, but this is actually an opportunity for you to kind of sell the business and get your name out there and if, and maybe answer some questions from the Board. So, go ahead and tell us all about your new business.
Sure. It's, um, 1814 Turnpike Street. Uh, we're, we're in a, like, an parking lot, and, um, so like you say, um, the Fire Department, the Health Department, um, they all, uh, you know, came here and, uh, do that inspection. Uh, they approved everything. Uh, we basically offer like, uh, the pizza, pasta, and, uh, subs, wraps. Um, oh, I've, I've been in this business for a while, but this is, um, like, my first place, um, moving forward. I don't know what's gonna happen, hopefully, but, like, we, we provide fresh products, uh, unprepared, um, prepared order, and, um, that's pretty much it, I think.
Okay.
What's your opening date?
Um, I don't, I don't know, like, uh, we, we're in this right now. Uh, we got the permits, uh, last, uh, Friday, last Friday, and, uh, we, we start, you know, like, exiting orders, and, um, and we hope, like, you know, once we got, uh, the license to go, to do grand opening.
Okay.
It all sound, it all sounds great. So I didn't hear, do you have a landmark as to where you are on Turnpike Street, what might be near you, or a street that's near you, or a building? I, I don't know if you said it, I could not hear it, but it probably would be helpful for the people listening at home.
It's in 1814 Turnpike Street. Um, the, the, the closest thing here is, um, um, the, the Plaza, the getaway plaza. Um, it's, uh, there's no, like, you know, houses around us, uh, we're just, like, in the middle of the world with a parking lot.
Oh.
Uh, stop and shop, it's like.
I was gonna say, is it Berry, it's, it's near Berry Farms?
That's right, right on Berry Farms.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's, so, so you're near Berry Farms, near the apartments, correct?
Yes, right. Yeah, we're like, by this.
Okay, that's what I thought, but, yeah, all right. That's a good landmark.
That's a great.
Okay.
I think.
That's all right. It's, not everyone likes speaking on the microphone through, uh, through their computers, um, us included.
Right, yeah.
Um, do we have any questions for the, from the Board?
I look forward to your opening.
Okay.
Best of luck.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Tariq Alhamad of Mama Mia Italian Kitchen LLC for a common victual license at 1814 Turnpike Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Um, and then I need a motion to move out of licensing.
Move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Second that.
And we have a second, aye. Okay. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are now out of licensing. Thank you, sir. Good, best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Paul.
There you go.
It's an easy one, finally, huh?
Yeah, really. And then we had so many papers tonight, I'm like, oh, gosh, where are all my licensing papers? But we're good, we're good. Much better than some of the, the others were.
You got it, you got it.
Very complicated, but we're good. Thank you.
Sure. Um, we have, uh, speaking of working with complications, our, our, our meeting schedule for July through December.
Great. We had a couple of conflicts come up.
Yeah.
One, I believe, was you, Mr. Chair. Remind me what yours was?
The 23rd of August.
Okay, and one was, um, Selectwoman Phillips. Was yours the same day?
No, it was not.
Which one was yours?
The July 20th.
6th. Okay, so typically we, we, we have gone down to one meeting in July, so if it pleased the Board, we could just keep with the July 12th date.
Yep.
And if we did do that, I would recommend we move the August meeting up.
Yep.
Because that is a very long time between July 12th and August 23rd, so that may work out for everyone in the end.
Yep.
Um, so looking at the August calendar, so Lori doesn't yell at me because she, I in the end. So looking at the August calendar, Laurie doesn't yell at me because I know she's on vacation, to the week of the 16th, right?
No.
I'm the week of the 2nd.
The week before. So they would, they would have it on...
So we do it the night?
Their meeting would be August 9th.
August 9th.
That's the week I'm on vacation.
So not the 23rd, August 9th.
9th.
How does that feel? Does everyone have a conflict that week?
Works.
It works.
Yeah.
Amazing, right? All right, so August 9th.
Perfect. But this doesn't mean that if something comes up and we all can make it happen, we do.
Yep.
That's one thing the Board of Selectmen does pretty well. We all try to say, okay, well, let's figure it out so we all can be there, which has always been good.
They need us, for sure. Okay. Any other concerns about any of the dates that we, I don't see anything else harming. No Halloween meeting, that's always bad.
All looks good.
Okay, great.
Good.
And then, while we're doing other fun things, an update...
Do we have to accept the meeting schedule? No, you're good.
No.
Okay, good, okay. Sorry, my fault.
And the other, as we were kind of alluding to it earlier, is update on our 375th anniversary, and I think there's somebody here that can take us, take us there.
It would be me, thank you. Actually, I worked on the committee 25 years ago when we had the 350th, and it's very exciting with the lift of all the COVID stuff that we've really been able to jump in. So we will be celebrating our 375th anniversary, which began not too long ago in May, is the original settlement, which was right here in North Andover. So despite some of the news articles that kind of hint that maybe it started with our sister to the south, it started right here in North Andover. So a few of us have gotten together to try to figure out of making this fun, even on short notice. So I think I've mentioned this to you before, that the North Andover Women's Club was already planning a gala in October. It's a Friday night at the Stevens Estate. More will come out with that. So we're looking at a few things. Not, we're not sure if we'll be able to do all of them, but we're certainly going to try. We are looking to have celebration banners that people can adopt on our flagpoles. We'll put it up as soon as we can after the, the, help me? Farmer's Market, Farmer's Market, yes, thank you. So we're working, we are working on that. Then we also, we'd like to have a parade with, loaded with lots of kids' activities and fun like that, and a fireworks display. There's been talk of maybe, one group considering maybe a golf outing, but again, none of it's written in stone just yet. Maybe a road race. But this is one really fun idea, and this actually came from the town manager, is to have an internet or an online time capsule. And what that will do is, and we have a wonderful taker who is willing to do that for us and run some of the programs for some of the kids, different programs. So what this will entail is that you can send in pictures to be copied. We could have stories from maybe some of our seniors of what it was like to grow up in North Andover when they were younger, stories, poems, get the kids involved. Maybe they can do artwork or poems and things like that. But we're looking for, in particular, old photos and maybe books and poems and stories that will all go online, and we will have an online time capsule, which is really exciting, because we're going to have a nice, like, internet document that we'll just, we'll have forever. And so we're really, and even carrying it on afterwards. So that was very exciting, and that came from the suggestion of the town manager. So groups that are on this committee are the North Andover Historical Society, the North Andover Improvement Society, the Women's Club, and we reached out to other, Festival Committee, absolutely, and anybody who would like to volunteer, anybody who would like to donate, the money would go towards fireworks or parade, which we need. The 350th, which was 25 years ago, they raised over $50,000 plus tons of donations of bands delivering for free. Of course, we're just in no position to do that, but we certainly are hoping for a really fun event. You know, we've talked about having the kids either like a Horribles Parade, or maybe dress in costume from 1646 till now, whatever, whatever period they feel like doing. So, and we're still open for ideas and people who want to help. So that's, that's the rundown, and at our next meeting, we hope to have a proclamation that, which I did research, we didn't have one 25 years ago, so we were looking to have an announcement again. But we are the original settlement, 1646, and it's a lot of fun, so.
So any proposed dates for any of these, the parade, the fireworks?
No, not quite just yet, because this really came up really pretty, the only one that we have right now is for the gala, which October 1st, a Friday night, so we wouldn't take away from a bridal event, most likely on a Friday night. And we're hoping that the weather will cooperate. We'll have it outside and inside at that time, but, you know, the tent will still be up, and that should be a very fun night for the grownups. So it'll be most likely appetizers, a cash bar, a band, and desserts and coffee. So that we have, by not having a full-blown sit-down dinner, we will have plenty places for people to sit and be comfortable. We can get more people involved in the fun, because everyone's ready to have some fun, get dressed up, and just celebrate the town. So we've got a lot of really fun things. So again, if you've got ideas and you want to run them by us, if you want to help, if you want to make donations, we'll take any, any amounts whatsoever to put towards a parade and fireworks and things like that. So that's the quick rundown. We'll be reporting more as we get more definite.
A small thing that may help for your time capsule idea, one of the, one of the challenges is sometimes you've got things that are kind of in formats that aren't in today's technology, or people don't know what to do. Sometimes the easiest is just literally take a picture of it, but you may want to think about helping people be comfortable with that or providing some resource for people to do that, because sometimes people have it in a way that's, it's hard to...
You mean like on two wheels, and they're going like this?
Whatever, yeah, right. So that just might be something that maybe help more things come out of attics and basements and all that.
The, we have a really good person who's very excited about it, so let's hope that he has those skills. If not, we're hoping that Cable will also assist us on it, and I believe that they, they will, so.
Great, awesome.
So there we go. Oh, there was also, maybe, but would have to vote for this, maybe an encampment on the, on the Common, a one-day encampment. Not like, well, Dicky was here, I was here, you probably were here too, Chris. We did for the 350th, we did have a full-blown at Barker's Farm. We took over the whole farm and had, the reenactors came from everywhere. So we were thinking maybe just an encampment, but you never know, could grow, so.
I'll listen for that. So thank you, Ruth. Appreciate it. Back in today's world, update, but it's all, it's going in the right direction, our COVID update, right?
Yeah. Earlier today, I yelled in Laurie's office, "Guess how many COVID cases we have?" In like an excited voice, I think I scanned her. We have nine.
Yeah.
A month ago today, we had 89. I mean, it's amazing, right?
Single digit.
Nine. So that's very exciting. We're very excited. Things are moving in the right direction, because people are getting vaccinated, and it's, it's really exciting. So we know that on May 29th, the COVID-19 restrictions will be lifted, and all industries will be permitted to operate at 100%. The gathering order and the mask order will all be rescinded on that day. There are going to be some, a new mask covering advisory going out, and masks will still be required on public and private transportation, in healthcare facilities, at congregant care settings, and health and rehabilitative day services, as well as indoors for staffs and students at K through 12 schools and early education providers. On June 15th, the state of emergency will be lifted by the governor, and on June 7th at your meeting, we will recommend lifting the local state of emergency as well. On May 29th, we can return to normal meetings, and on June 15th, we must return to normal meetings that would be open to the public. And so, you know, the Chair and I have talked about this a little bit. The Planning Board has been talking a lot about how they're going to handle their meetings, because they think they'll have a big audience, because they have luck going on, and they're going to go over to the senior center. I'd recommend we kind of keep an eye on the agenda and see if we can continue to meet in here, and if it becomes apparent that that's not maybe the most practical, we certainly could move. There was the open meeting law emergency order, June 15th, when the state of emergency ends, that also ends that emergency order as well. So we would revert back to our remote participation policy. And our remote participation policy for our committees and commissions is that you have to have a quorum in the room, the chair needs to be in the room, and only one person can be remote. That's our policy. The Commission on Ability Assistance is actually allowed to meet remotely forever, so they're the one caveat to the policy. So we're heading towards normal. You know, anyone who's tried to come to Town Hall knows you can come on in now, which is very exciting. In our other buildings, already are open, are following soon. So we're very excited to see this kind of changing, and people seem more hopeful and optimistic, and it's such a nice, a nice thing to see.
It's been a long year, 18, how many, what has it been, 15 months?
Yeah. How many months?
15, I'm guessing? I mean, really, people are so flexible, so very appreciative of, you know, your whole team. And I think residents being pretty darn patient.
Very patient. Yep, we agree.
Good stuff.
So welcome back.
Yeah.
Good to have you.
I'll find out. All right, consent items, we have two. We have donations to the senior center, and there was a, a very nice letter from Paula Lynch on the donations in memory of Jack Graham, which is in our packet, and just, again, very much appreciate all these folks stepping forward.
I think anybody who knew Jack Graham, as I did, this is not at all surprising. Lovely, 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 lovely man who loved his town, did a lot of great things for North Andover, very smart man, graduated from MIT, all good stuff. So this is, this is just great. What a tribute.
And so again, we're happy to receive those. And we also have an affordable unit resale waiver. This is a right of first refusal on 38 Cinder Pass Way. Again, this is kind of our standing policy to do this. And there is a notation from our town manager, I'm sorry, from Andrew Shapiro to our town manager regarding this. Are there any questions or consent? So I'll just hear a motion to accept these two consent items?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the consent items as presented.
Great.
A second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
And let's see. Okay, we have approval of our minutes, our last open session, May 10th, 2021. Everybody had a chance to review them. Any changes or...
No.
I'll just hear a motion to get those done.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve the open session minutes of May 10th, 2021, as written.
Appreciate it.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass five zero, all good. Old business, I don't think we've got a lot of new business today. That's from darn sure, huh? So town manager, what's on, what's on our report? We've been filling, filling positions.
No one else is allowed to leave, because me and Dee can't handle it. No, we're in really good shape. You know, the only thing we really have outstanding right now is a couple of positions DPW that we're currently interviewing for, is the assistant accountant position. So if anyone knows anybody who's interested in being an assistant accountant, we do have that position open. Other than that, we're really, we're really doing well on our hiring. And we'd like to let the new HR director get here and get her feet wet. So I threatened everyone at our last pop-up meeting and told them that they couldn't leave ever again, no one. So we're in good shape.
Great. Select Board updates?
The only thing I have is that I attended our first annual Anne Broadstreet Poetry Contest on Saturday on the Common, and it was so well-attended. There was probably 75 people on the Common, and I thought the poet lore committee did such a wonderful job. They received 70 poems for the contest, ranging from, they had the adults, they had, I think it was one and two, three to five, middle school and high school. So they had two finalists from each category and the winner, and they all, although, all of them came and read their poems. And there was a lot of history about Anne Broadstreet, how she was the first published poet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And of course, we honor her with the Annie Broadstreet. And I was fortunate to read our own town manager's submission. She's multi-talented and had a great submission, so.
You submitted a poem?
She did.
I did.
And it was funny, because my daughter was also doing poetry in school, and she told her teacher, and she made me send the poem into the first grade, second grade class too, so they read it there as well. So who knew? I know.
You'll have to send it to us, so we can see it.
I understand that Laura did a wonderful job reading it aloud, so thank you, Laura.
I said I would be here. It was nice to see people on the Common again, and just, it's what makes us North Andover is that we do these great community events. So it was great.
I want to give a quick shout-out to the Sustainability Committee, because they did actually have a great cleanup day event, and it was sunny. It's really nice. And also, I think it might be the Garden Club that is doing the little pollinator garden out in front of Town Hall. I drove by, and they were working really hard on that this weekend. It's really neat.
Do you know who that is?
Who is it?
It is a partnership between our conservation agent, Taylor, who actually brought the project forward, and has been working very closely with the Garden Club to do it. So he was here Saturday. Kudos to him. He's amazing. We're so lucky to have him, and he's been working very closely with the Garden Club. He's working with the Girl Scouts. He's...
Noticed it, it was great.
Amazing. It looks awesome. So we're really excited. No, I had mine.
Go ahead. I think we would be remiss if we didn't, once again, turn any attention to our town manager, who has recently been recognized as a outstanding woman by the YMCA, right? One of 50, was it?
22, I think.
22, I'm sorry, 22.
Yes, thank you.
So congratulations on that. And I heard you've also been recognized by the Girl Scouts.
I got an appreciation pin.
Yeah.
They told me I could wear my uniform. I was like, "I don't have one."
Accolades just keep on coming, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And finally, I hope everyone has a great Memorial Day weekend. We have, it'll be, I think, a virtual Memorial Day celebration again this year. Hopefully, this is the last time we say this, that there won't be a parade.
I think, aren't we doing it?
Well, the...
You can come.
No, we can come.
You can come.
Come to the, I'm sorry, you can come to the cemetery.
Yes.
There's no parade.
Right, okay.
I should have said that. I'm on the committee. No, there's, there's no parade, but no, we can, and because the number changed, it wasn't limited to 150, but because it's outdoors, there's no limitation, so.
Everyone's invited. I think we're all going to miss the parade, select them down.
Yeah.
Because we do like the parade.
But unfortunately, no parade.
Hopefully, this is the last time we'll say that.
I hope so, too.
Well, that means everyone should make a donation to the 375th parade, and we'll have a really good one.
It'll be the best parade.
Any amount.
And I would be remiss in not recognizing that on the 4th of June, there will be graduation at our high school, hopefully the last graduation under the umbrella of the pandemic. And I must say, having my, my last son graduating, kudos to our, our school system and to the superintendent for navigating this past year. And I'll tell you, these seniors that I'm most connected with can say, you know, they really worked hard to try and make this a good year for them. So I think everybody's glad the school year's coming to an end and looking forward to the next iteration. And I think that's where we are as a town, that's where we were tonight. Boy, there's so much that's coming together. It's just, there's a great town to be in, isn't it? Yeah. All right, so we're going to see us all on the June 7th, mask-free potentially. Looks like that's going to be it, so the great unveiling. We'll see, we'll see you all then. All right, I'll just have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we adjourn.
Great, thank you.
A second.
All in favor?
Hold on, ever.
All right, we're done. Stick to everybody.